Good evening. It's 5:30. We'll call this work session of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cruss.
Here.
Councilmember Lindonfelder.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or any other interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Item one, Home Rule Option.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Good evening. This is probably the first of a series of meetings that you'll have on this subject. The intention tonight from staff is to provide you with an overview of what the home rule provision is, some of the considerations that you should take into account, and it will need to be on your November 2018 general election ballot. So the idea of doing the first one now is to give you some time to think about what course of action you'd like to take. And with that, Tina Moline is here to give a brief presentation on home rule. Tina?
Yes, thank you very much. Hey. So tonight's agenda item is to discuss the home rule option. In 1980, Arizona voters had approved of a state-imposed annual expenditure limitation on local governments. And this calculation, or this limitation, is calculated by taking all local governments' fiscal year 1980 budgets and multiplying them by a population and inflation factor. Now, what it doesn't take into consideration are any additional services or expansion of services that cities provide over the years. It also doesn't take into account any services that are offered to residents or citizens outside of the city of Kingman limits. So you don't get to include that in that population factor. The city of Kingman, by 1988, had outgrown that expenditure limitation and took to the voters what the state has allowed because they have recognized these issues, what they call an alternative expenditure limitation. And since then, the Kingman voters have approved of this option, which we call the home rule option, or what we have adopted as the home rule option. So what is the expenditure limitation? I've talked about what it is, but what does it look like for the city of Kingman? So the calculation is on the top row of that table at the bottom of the slide, but the figures are on the bottom. So we look at that population factor, which takes the current population, or the census 2016 population, divided by the 1980 population. Then it takes the inflation factors, and then it multiplies that by that fiscal year 1980 budgeted expenditure, which is that $4.4 million. So in fiscal year 18, our annual expenditure limitation was $43.5 million, just so you understand how the formula works. So as I said, many cities offer different services, or offer increased services, new services, and services to citizens outside of city limit residents. So the four options that the state allows, and two of them are really only one-time or emergency or one-time options. The other two are those recurring options that cities really want to adopt, and that is the permanent base or the home rule. Most cities in Arizona, 78 of them, actually operate under one of these options, either the home rule or the permanent base. What's the difference between those two different options? Well, the permanent base adjustment actually adjusts that fiscal year 1980 budget, and of course, you want to increase that because ultimately, that's going to increase the annual expenditure limitation. It is still required to go to the voters, but it is not required to go to the voters every four years like home rule is. It goes one time, and it stays in place until the city says, "We need to go back out and increase that base again," or choose home rule. Then there's the home rule option, and there's the home rule with exclusions, and there's the pure home rule option. The home rule with exclusion says, okay, the Constitution allows us to deduct certain expenditures from that annual expenditure limitation, but on top of those, we're also allowed to deduct other allowable exclusions that have to be approved by the auditor general. This particular option is the one that the city of Kingman falls under, and it is required to go to the voters every four years. And then we look at the pure home rule, and that particular alternative says, whatever the city budgets is whatever the city can spend. You're not allowed to use the constitutional exclusions, but you don't need to because whatever the city budgets is what it gets to spend, and it also is required to go to the voters every four years. So by 1988, Kingman had outgrown the state-imposed limit, and so the home rule with exclusions options was adopted and has been approved by the voters ever since. Kingman's home rule option excludes water, sewer, and sanitation expenses from the state-imposed limit, and that's really because they're self-supporting. We don't use taxes, or state shared revenues, or HERF funds, nothing to support those expenses, and they're also provided to non-city-of-Kingman citizens. But the city is still required to operate under that state-imposed limit in fiscal year 18 of $43.5 million. So looking at the city of Kingman's fiscal year 18 budget, we had total appropriations of $117.4 million. Now, looking at the constitutional exclusions, we were able to reduce that amount to $73.2 million. There were about just over $40 million in constitutional exclusions. And then, when we took into account the water, the sewer, and the sanitation expenses, we then fell to $41.7 million, so falling below the annual expenditure limitation by $1.8 So our current home rule option expires in fiscal year '20, or with the fiscal year '20 budget, making it necessary to put it on the ballot in November of '18. So as I said, the city's fiscal year '18 budget fell $1.8 million under the state's imposed limitation. And looking into the future years, that's a very small amount, by the way, 3% to 4%, about 4% under the limitation. And so when we look at next year, we know what our preliminary expenditure limitation's going to be, and it's going to be about $45 million. And so as we move into looking at these different options, or looking at the home rule with exclusions option, we want to take into consideration what fiscal year '20 through fiscal year '23 might look in the city's budget. And some of the things that we know are going to increase, or may increase, and that have been talked about, PSPRS, we know, is going to continue to exponentially increase. We know pavement preservation, our dedication to pavement preservation, is going to increase. We know that we've talked about parks. Park site acquisition is in our CIP and continues to be in our CIP and will be proposed again this year. Landscaping, sidewalk improvements, bike pathways, that's something else that we've talked about. CART, we've talked about expanding the services to CART. Annexations have come up, but we know that although we may get increased population, and it may increase that population factor, the costs associated with annexation typically tend to exceed that. The airport, that's something else that we know may come into play. And then improved streets, and I gave a history of a few improved streets, but that's always another project on top of pavement preservation that the council may decide to fund. And then improvement districts. Those come up once in a while, and although improvement districts are funded by debt, which is constitutionally excluded, the maintenance and repairs of the streets in improvement districts does not go away. So those are some of the considerations that we may want to take, that we may want to account for when we're looking at the next four years. So if the home rule with exclusions option is selected as the alternatives and voters approve it, the city cannot exceed the state-imposed limitation. So should the permanent base, or should the pure home rule option be considered as we move through this? Regardless of whatever option might be selected, we still have to take it to election and take it to the voters. And so that process will start with public hearings in June, move through sending analyses to the auditor general in July, publicity pamphlets will be created and then mailed to the voters, and then the election will be held in November. Regardless of whatever the outcome may be, we need to remember that city staff, city resources, money, buildings, equipment cannot be used to influence any, cannot be influenced, cannot be used to influence the outcome of this vote. So with that, and I'm sorry, I didn't drink enough water today, I will try to answer any questions, or if you have any comments. I don't know if Manager Bacon has anything to say.
Thank you, Tina. This is really a thing for the mayor and council to consider, and that's the slide Tina gave about the different things you might want to factor in. There's a story in today's paper about the airport. None of those dollars are currently in the budget. As Tina just explained, that would have to be part of the math of calculating the expenditure limits. The city's commitment to pavement preservation, part of that is in the current budget, but part of it isn't because of the way that we built the current budget. So the slide that's up right now called "Looking Ahead" is what I would ask you to consider, and then juxtapose how you feel about that list against the amount of resources available under the current approach, and that'll guide your next discussion. I would think that you would want to revisit this in early May when the budget's out, and you've either had the briefing on the recommended budget, or the council meeting right after that. The budget comes out the 3rd of May, the briefings are the 10th and 11th, so the council meeting either the 1st of May or the 15th of May, to me, would make the most sense. And as Tina said, council needs to make a decision on what you want to do in time for June to start processing this. So hopefully, you found this a useful introduction to the home rule discussion, and Tina and I trust it was timely as well as useful.
So I do just want to make one more point, and that is, we are required to give 60 days notice before the public hearings, so I don't know if pushing it out till May would allow us ample time to hold the public hearings, which would then be in July, and then I don't know what type of time crunch that might be for the...
June is the latest that we can hold public hearings.
Say that again, Sid.
June is the latest that we can hold the public hearings to be able to meet all of our statutory requirements leading up to the election.
That I agree with. What I think Tina was suggesting is we might have a notice requirement I wasn't aware of.
Right, we have a 60-day notice requirement, so we have...
60-day prior to the June, so.
Maybe bring it back to the beginning of April, maybe?
Beginning of April rather than in mid-May, so, to make that timeframe.
Okay.
So may I ask a question? When you talk about considerations in selecting an alternative, and you're listing those very specific items, we would have to identify those, correct?
No.
We wouldn't.
You do not have to identify. What you need to take into consideration is the possibility that these, that we may spend money over the next four years on these items that we felt might come into play over the next four years. Those are some of the additional expenditures that are not included in existing budgets that may increase fiscal year '20 to '23's budgets to where we may exceed the annual expenditure limitation.
So the current language that has been voter-supported since, what, 1988, '89 specifically says excludes item 1, 2, and 3, right?
Correct.
And you're proposing that we don't follow that format?
No, this is not for an exclusion.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that if we're going to spend additional monies on these items, we may not want to continue with what we have, the alternative that we've used in the past. We may want to use that permanent base adjustment option, or just the pure home rule option.
I thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Lindonfelder, did you have a comment?
Uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify also. So what we could be faced with in the coming years is having the revenue to spend on these, but not being able to do it because we've exceeded that limitation? So we'd be in a real catch-22, wouldn't we?
That's correct.
So it seems like we're going to need to really look at this alternative and find an alternative, because that's a situation we would not care to be in.
I would agree.
My question was really for Manager Bacon. It sounds like, you know, hopefully you'll probably still be here in April when we continue this discussion.
Right.
Will you be working with staff and with council in kind of vetting through the permanent base option and the home rule option as far as...
No, we definitely could staff out those options for you so that you have a better understanding of what your choices are. The other thing which I haven't had a chance to talk to the city clerk and the finance director about is the ability to run essentially concurrent notices for a public hearing in June, one for one option and one for a second option. And I'm not being encouraging or discouraging on that, but the thing that both of them said to you tonight is that it has to be in June at the latest, and you need 60 days in advance of that before you can have your public hearing in June, so.
I want to say thank you very much for bringing this alternative to our attention. This isn't something that the city has explored previously. This really gives us a lot more options.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this work-study item? Thank you very much for the presentation. The amended presentation, will that be available on the website?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, item two, Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Chief DeVries, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council. Here to give you a sneak peek, if you will, at what I think is going to be a great program coming to our state, and that's the form of a statewide accreditation program. Accreditation has been something that we as an agency have looked at for many years, and not just our department, but departments across the state. There is a national accreditation program, but quite frankly, it's cost prohibitive for a community our size. As a matter of fact, there's only 11 law enforcement agencies in the state that are nationally accredited because of that cost, and it's staff-intensive. For an agency our size, we would have to have one individual assigned and tasked specifically just to accreditation, and we don't have that flexibility to be able to do that. So agencies across the state have talked about this for some time, and that's pursuing our own accreditation, and I'm going to run you through steps that have taken place here in the last year and a half, and I believe really setting the stage for the future of law enforcement for the state of Arizona. We collectively came together and developed the mission, as you see here, to provide the best practice policies, procedures, and operational guidelines for all law enforcement agencies in the state. And with this, the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police formally organized a working group in January of 2017 under President Terry Rozma. He was the one that developed the group. I was fortunate enough to be selected to be part of that group, and I can tell you, it was an excellent group to work with. We had some very intense dialogue over the past year, and we actually achieved our goal. We thought we would be able to complete it in a year and a half, and we were proud to turn over the completed package at the end of January to our board and move forward. In May of 2017, we also joined what's called the CredNet. That's a national association that oversees statewide accreditation for law enforcement in the country. We became the 29th state to actually join, and there's 30 now that have come on board and seen the viability of such a program. We use the templates that we received from the CredNet group, and over the course of that, to give you an idea, national accreditation is about 450 to 470 standards. It's very intense. Most of your statewide groups are around 150. We actually have adopted 175, so we're on the high end for statewide standards, but there's unique characteristics, we believe, to Arizona that we wanted to specifically build into these standards. We're looking at taking into consideration three accepted policy bodies that are out there right now. One is Lexipol, another is Edwards and Ginn, which is Arizona-centric. These are highly recognized law enforcement liaisons that have provided great years of services, and also the IACP model policies. That is what our agency follows and utilizes on a day-to-day basis. Through this, you're going to have the ability for agencies across the state to access the website and obtain contact information as well as model policies that they in fact can adopt themselves and put into implementation. And with that, there's going to be a group. We'll have a program manager. You know, when we started a year and a half ago, we didn't have a program. We didn't have a director, and we had no money. And in a year's time, I'm very proud to say that that's not the case anymore. And I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize and appreciate and send thanks to Jackie Walker, our own Jackie Walker. She was the one who partnered us up with the Arizona Risk Pool. And the end of November of 2017, after a presentation to the Risk Pool Board, they formally recognized what we were doing and have funded the program for us that will allow us to be at a level for acceptance into the program to keep it very cost-effective for communities to accomplish this major goal. The commission is going to be comprised of seven members, and you can see a list of the seven members that will be part of the commission. They will be the group that will review all of the applications, ensuring that standards are met, and will be sanctioning those agencies that achieve that goal, and will be moving forward through the process. Our goals, to give you an idea of what we desire to do, and that's to obtain accreditation by January of 2020. That's a pretty aggressive goal to achieve, but I firmly believe that we're going to be able to do that. We are going to do a complete rewrite of all policies and procedures that our department follows right now. It'll be pretty much taking much of what we have and formatting it over and adapting it into the new standards. We want to secure all of the participation from every supervisor in our agency, and I can tell you, we've put the word out, and every one of them are anxious and willing and want to be a part of this process because they too see the value in it. Then I want to go one step further. We want to have two of our staff members trained as ALIP assessors. What that means is, these would be the individuals that would go out to agencies that are seeking accreditation. They would be the site inspectors. They would assess the policies. They would assess the facilities, the training, a multitude of different aspects to ensure that that agency truly meets accreditation standards. That's a tremendous tool for us, for those that want to further their career with KPD. It's, to me, I can't think of any better succession planning that we could have available to us. So our timeline, as we move forward, and I've been in contact and working with Mr. Bacon through all of this, is you'll see as we move forward into the budget, a request to fund our prior-approved deputy chief captain position that's been void now for quite a few years. That void has been taxing on us significantly, and it becomes more and more cumbersome every year. This project falls under the preview of that particular position, along with two other major projects that you'll hear about in the budget process. We've already held our initial internal KPD meeting, and we have, as a matter of fact, our second meeting is tomorrow morning, as we're going to begin to start to task out standards for rewrite. By the end of this month, first part of April, we hope to identify two members that will participate in the ALIP assessor training. Again, I see this as our future in developing and mentoring our future leadership. The initial application phase opens up July of this year. One thing that we're fortunate, because what we're hearing across the state, there's a lot of excitement and interest in getting on board and jumping into it. They're only going to probably be able to take 20 to 25 agencies in the initial wave. Because of our participation in that working group, we have the rights to join into that first wave. So our opportunity is there to jump on it fresh and move forward. By August, you're getting the sneak peek. This is going to be brought to the Arizona League Conference and laid out for all of the cities and towns so that they can pursue it, as well for their agencies and communities. In January 2020, ACPA, our chiefs association, has set that as the initial awarding of accreditation, and I want to see us in that initial wave of being awarded and recognized as a truly accredited agency. So it's been a lot of work, and just over a year and a half, we went from a concept to a document, to a funded document, and a program that has come to reality, and we're very anxious to move forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I want to say thank you very much. I've kind of been watching you go through this process. It's really been incredible how much you've accomplished in such a short period of time.
We had a tremendous working group that was very diverse, and it wasn't a group that would be willing to sit around and just agree. We got into some pretty intense discussions, I could say. And what we've done in setting some of these standards, actually, we're raising the bar continually across the state, to the point where Post, which is our accreditation for law enforcement training, will have to probably raise some of their standards as well to meet what our expectations are.
Thank you. Quick question. What do you see the direct benefit to the residents of Kingman to have this program?
It's, from that aspect, you're looking at having a law enforcement agency in their community that has adopted best practices, not just for the state, but nationally, so that they know that the officers that they are encountering on the street are trained to the best of their ability.
Thank you very much. Other questions, comments?
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all of KPD for your commitment to excellence. I think that if you're doing things, maybe five or even 10 years, the same way you've done them, you know, chances are you're probably not an excellent organization anymore, an excellent performing organization. So this program, always assessing yourself, keeping yourself at the front, you know, that's something I think hopefully all of our citizens can be very proud of.
And I'm very fortunate. I have a tremendous team.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think you're not moving, are you? Because it's red light camera enforcement.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Right after I arrived here, Chief had instituted a discussion about ways to make the department better. You just heard one of them, and a second one of those was to deal with the increasing traffic congestion and violation of laws on one of our major streets. And so Chief and his team put together a presentation, making it financially interesting, affordable, and in other communities, very successful. So, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Mayor and Vice Mayor, and members of council, again, a chance to talk about kind of an innovative program, not necessarily something new in regards to technology, but it would be new to this particular region. Mr. Bacon and I, through our discussions about how we could enhance traffic safety and minimize our costs, the technology was one of the things that rose to the top. And clearly, we've tried to divert our traffic unit to focus on top 10 accident intersections. Unfortunately, those are some of the most dangerous roadways for our officers to take enforcement action. When they do see violations, many times they make the stop. They've actually added and compounded the problem just by an additional presence in the roadway there. So special thanks to Sergeant David Reif and Lieutenant Mark Chastain, who have completed the initial research. And if I may, with this, I'd like to show just a very brief, it's 2 minutes and 50 seconds, but I think it really truly gives a good overview of what we are looking to...
Red light safety cameras mounted on poles at intersections are meticulously engineered and maintained to accurately capture potential red light running violations. The technology is complex, but let's break it down in simple terms and explain the basic operation of these lifesaving devices. Take a look.
What I'd like to get across is you have real human being police officers doing the final review. The work that they do to make sure they have the right person, to make sure the car matches, and to make sure that there was in fact a violation, it's just not haphazard. And in some cases, some of these red light violations are just so very close. Normally, the first thing we'll do with those is reject them. If there's a red light violation, we then accept that violation, be processed, and send out persons. The number of accidents at the intersections where we're using the program have in fact gone down. What we'd like the program to do is simply modify behavior, get people thinking about the fact that they are driving a vehicle. And that 3,500-pound vehicle can definitely cause a lot of damage to themselves or others.
If I could, moving forward with this, what I'd like to say is what this is not and what this is. This is not a revenue generator whatsoever. What it is, is truly an ability for us to improve public safety and traffic safety in our roadway. So our primary goal, first and foremost, is to decrease traffic crashes, in particular along our top-10 accident areas, and supplement our enforcement options. When we are out there, our traffic unit officers are out there, patrol officers, if we're working red light enforcement on Stockton Hill Road, or Andy Devine, or Airway, it takes a minimum of two officers to cover that intersection, one to be able to observe the violation, and second officer to be able to track down and stop the offender. This takes that away. We don't have to have these additional officers working those particular intersections. It increases the safety for the traveling public because we're not making those stops in the roadway, and it also increases the safety for our officers who are exposed to it. To give you an idea, what we would like to do, and what we're proposing, and would like input from you, is to try three pilot intersections. Right now, when you take a look at the 2015 data, we have anywhere between 25,000 and 31,000 vehicles a day traveling on Stockton Hill Road. Crashes citywide are over 1,100. Stockton Hill and Airway is our number-one accident intersection. The 211 crashes, that's a crash there every, little more than every other day. And another one that we want to take a look at that is increasing, and we see traffic compounding in that particular area is Stockton and Detroit, with a new motel complex that are going up there and additional growth right there. We're going to have some significant challenges, and I think this would give us an opportunity to see what we have as a perceived problem and be ahead of the curve to enhance some safety along that corridor. And the third would be at Stockton and Walupi Mountain Road. What they project as we move forward with this is you would see some significant citations that would be issued in the initial. However, as it progresses, and the public becomes more aware of the availability and the presence of red light cameras, what they project is typically they'll see a maturity of about four citations a day that come out of there versus multiples before. There's several options that we can take a look at. Option one would be, we front the money, $81,000 in a paid per citation. Our recommendation is something that's available through American Traffic Solutions. That's option two, no budget impact. They provide all of the equipment. They put all of the equipment in, and there's no cost to us as a city. There is a fee per citation that's assessed to the violator and is not assessed to us as the city. So really, there's no risk, there's no monetary investment upfront. Option three is an alternate where we would pay a monthly fee, but again, option two seems to be the one that we would pursue. And I think this slide really sums it up. Nationally, red cameras are, if you check with the public, they're in the 60 percentile, high 60s, where people that support red light cameras. Speed cameras, not so much. And I understand the controversy related to those, but this is one where it's more accepted by the public, and it's because of these stats. We can reduce our crashes by a third at some of our problem intersections. That's been proven historically across the country. And I think it's something that we feel is worthy of taking a look at and pursuing as an alternative to adding additional staff. This is just a brief overview, as you saw through the video, of the different processes that go through from the technology placement to the violation reviewed by the company, which then comes to us for the final review and approval, and then moves through the court process and the assessment of the fines. So we've done the preliminary research, and before we went any further, we wanted input from you as to, is this something that you believe is a good direction for us to pursue? And if so, we would be happy to move to the next phase and begin to get into more serious dialogue with the companies that provide this technology. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. First of all, thank you very much. Since I saw this, I've actually, I drive through those intersections every day, and I have been much more cognizant of, there are a lot of red light runners. That is definitely an issue. I have a couple of questions. We know the speed cameras, they are, as you said, they're very controversial. Seems like they're here one day, and then they're excluded the next, and they're back. Has this red light detection technology, that's not really suffered the same scrutiny, has it?
No, there is a bill that's currently being reviewed at the state Capitol right now. And again, they're trying to eliminate the speed cameras. However, the only thing related to red camera is what they're mandating, is that there's a law enforcement review through the entire process. We've already built that in, and that's something that we want to see. So even if this legislation moves through, what we're proposing would be in full compliance.
Thank you. One other quick question. What would your pilot program, that test program, what would that look like? I mean, what criteria are you looking for? What measures are you hoping to bring back to council to see if it's something that we should, as a community, expand?
We would want to do, I think, at least a minimum of a year of data collection in regards to accident ratios out there. Citations is what we would compare as well, and through the speed. So we would bring back a multitude of different measurements that we could show you and be able to say. I would think after a year's time, we could give you a pretty good idea as to whether this is something that we may want to expand beyond what the three intersections would be. My personal opinion, I believe it's something that will happen.
Will this start with, as typical with your department, some kind of public education process?
Absolutely. We would do a major push out through all of our different social media that we have to educate the public on it. We'd do a multitude of different avenues from that, and then launch into the program. I don't know, Dave, maybe you can touch on this. If other communities have done like a, kind of a, say, a 30 to 60-day warning, I'm not sure how that would fit within the company's requirements as well, because they're making a major investment in regards to technology.
Each intersection roughly is $85,000 plus to each direction. So typically, once they install, they monitor that, determine whether it's fitting what it's designed to do. In the past two years, roughly, combined with all three areas, we've issued 210 citations for red light violations in some form or fashion. 125 at Stockton Hill Road, 27 at Detroit, and 51 roughly at Walupi. If this is accepted, using just simply that model of four violations per intersection per day, roughly increases that to 4,300. So it identifies that we truly have a problem just by just setting that equipment in place and letting it do its thing. Plus, the education will ultimately hopefully curb those issues that we have. 4,360 is a huge issue that we're not necessarily able to address based upon safety constraints, the motoring public, and so on and so forth. Each and every one of you have been on Stockton Hill Road and see how congested it is. Not only when we do a traffic stop, but we're causing that congestion even further because people have to go around us, depending upon the violator's choice of stop, even though it's not our choice to stop them in the same location that typically they do.
Thank you. Other questions?
I do have a question. It seems like one of the controversial issues is the number of signs posting that it's a warning, the number of signs and the location of those signs.
That is something the company provides, and we'd be able to work directly with them to ensure that it meets our expectations in regards to proper notification and warning from that. And one of the things that we also learned from the company as well is, sometimes when you get just a few intersections up, you can see reduction of crashes at others because they think they're at every red light. And that's not a bad thing to have happen across the community, because what we're out to do is to change driver habits and increase safety on the roadway.
Thank you. Can I ask one more follow-up question? So if this program is truly successful, you won't be issuing citations, right? Because people will begin to comply with the law. Is there an expectation from this company that you generate X amount of revenue if we went with option B?
If we went with option B, what they've done with their research and all of their prior data, we would fit that criteria. They would then make that decision down the road as to the expansion, whether it's financially feasible for them to do or not. And again, that gets into our final review as well for each violation. It would be our staff that would say, yes, this is a clear violation. Yes, move forward.
I think this is just a really great move towards reducing accidents and ensuring the safety of the motoring public and your department as well. Any comments here?
I wanted to say thank you very much. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it will be beneficial, very helpful. I had a couple of questions regarding the 80,000 to 85,000. That is, that's the cost of the equipment, or does that include the installation?
That's the cost of the equipment, roughly, plus installation, which provided it's option two, is no cost.
Okay. The company would be looking for a return on that investment with their $40 fee per ticket. Is there an agreement or a term contract had with that, with that once it's installed? I know you're looking for at least an annual, one-year test set of data for results.
Correct. And that would be the second phase. We just wanted to bring this to you as an initial to judge if there was interest for us to move forward. That would be the next part, where we would get into actual contracts, which would go through legal review with Mr. Cooper's office and Mr. Bacon.
Okay. And if we did move forward with this, any idea how soon we could have the equipment installed and operational?
I would guess that if we proceed with everything, some people could be getting some pre-Christmas portraits.
Thank you again. I appreciate it.
I think Councilmember Lincolnfelter.
Yes, thank you. So the three intersections that are proposed, would it be possible to, just as an additional consideration, to maybe extend, increase that to four, and then maybe include Gordon as well? I know there's been a number of accidents at that location as well, also on Stockton Hill, Stockton and Gordon, you know what I'm talking about. And then just for the public's information, I mean, earning a red light, it's a very serious offense. Can you tell us how many points you get on your record, on your driving record, if you get cited?
I believe it's three points.
Is it three points? Do you have to go to driving school or anything like that? Or is it, because I thought at one point it was, they almost treated it like a really serious infraction where you get your license taken away.
They would be eligible for traffic school if they fit that criteria, but in regards to that intersection, we could explore that with the company, its potential of adding a fourth intersection.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think Councilmember Wade had a question or a comment, and then I'd like to make a few.
Thank you. Yeah, I did have a question. I'd be partial to option two, but with respect to the recommended, I mean, it suggests that it's recommended because there would be no budget impact. I imagine that's taking into consideration the fact that obviously a fee would be added, or obviously there'd be a fine. You know, sometimes there's a traffic referee or lawyers involved, and the judge would be involved as well. So I imagine the cost would be offset because of the fine. Is that, is that correct?
I think, I actually think that the chief addressed this in his presentation, that the way option two works is that for every citation, the company receives a $40 fee at the time that the case is adjudicated. And so that's, upon that basis is how we got to the three locations. We're more than happy to ask them to consider a fourth, but their analysis of the situation is the amount of time it takes to recover the investment in equipment and the cost of installing that equipment. We like option two for, one reason that's obvious, which is the cost of the city. Right. But we like it for another reason, which is that it underscores what the chief said, which is that we're not interested in this to raise revenue for the city. And so we think it's the best of both worlds in that regard. Other comment that I'd like to address is the part of the questions tonight regarding pre-notification. I would suggest that once the contract is worked out and has been approved by this council, that at least a 30-day notice at the location, that that's, location is going to be monitored by traffic cameras, go up. And so that's just to let people know that it's happening. The signage that the chief talked about is in the operational phase. It says, and this intersection is being monitored. So people have a heads-up, if you will, that it's coming, and then they know that it's there. The other thing to make sure we're clear about next steps is that, especially based on the comments tonight, assuming that the council gives direction to staff to pursue the implementation of this, the chief and his team would develop a specific contract for you to consider as part of a future business meeting. And I don't want to commit to how long that's going to take them to get done, but that's your next step from the council level, is to see a contract proposed between the city and this vendor for the provision of three or four locations to have red light camera enforcement. And then that'll tell you when 30 days of pre-notification happens, and then when it actually starts. But I agree with the chief and his staff that this is definitely a 2018 achievable product.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Vice Mayor?
Chief, as I listen to this, I'm thinking that it would free up staff to do things that may be another priority that right now we don't have time for them to do because of having to monitor the streets in this area. Is that true?
Absolutely. I can't begin to tell you how many requests we have for traffic enforcement in our residential neighborhoods. And when they're getting direction from me to focus where our biggest collisions are, those areas don't get the attention that they also deserve. So it would allow us to get out into more... So it would allow us to get out into more areas that also have need for coverage.
Well, I support it. And last week when I was at the AAED symposium, the state director for ADOT spoke about their increasing use of technology. And it's just where it's at, isn't it? Because they're even going to be using technology to adjust speed limits based on dust control down in that section between Phoenix and Tucson. So I think it's really important that we stay abreast of the, and use the technology that's available. So thank you for coming up with a good project here.
Any other questions or comments?
One last quick one. The proposition would be for northbound, southbound only, not any of the crossways?
I believe it will cover all aspects of the intersection.
So all four directions of each of those three intersections?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It's appreciated. I think it appears that there is support from this council to pursue this project and bring back more information.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Do you need anything beyond that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good stuff. Item four, PSPRS. City manager Bacon?
Thank you. Find where I am here. Good evening. The next item on the agenda in work session tonight is to provide the council with an overview of the public safety retirement system here in the state of Arizona. Kind of explain what it is, how we got to where we are, and then to make some specific suggestions for the city of Kingman. The public safety retirement system was created fifty years ago this month and was signed into law by then-Governor Williams. And it was a single plan for public safety personnel to pool their investments, provide relatively equal benefits between employers, simplify transferring from one employer to another. But this is a key exception. Each public safety unit has its own account. So it's, you'll see in a minute, it's not like a typical pension plan that is pooled for everybody regardless of location. This is, everybody has their own. So the city of Kingman has two, for instance, one for police and one for fire. There were reforms in 2011 and 2016 that created three tiers of benefits depending on their enrollment date. Tier one is the original. Tier two was the first reform. Tier three was the second. Lot of pension plans for public employees are done on a fifty-fifty basis, and that became one of the legislative goals. And it finally happened in July of 2017. The retirement board administers these pension plans, and they do it for cities and towns and state agencies, counties, tribes, fire districts. It's a defined benefit plan, which means you know how much you're going to get. Defined contribution plans are the ones where you put in money, and what you get is a function of how well you invested the money over the years. So this is a defined benefit plan. There are 256 individual accounts that the system manages, and there are unique contribution rates for each one. So if you're at a conference with other city officials and you talk about your rate, they might look at you like, wow, that's way high, or what a great deal. But it's not a very meaningful conversation because everybody has their own. Seven-member board of trustees, and they're responsible for investing the monies and paying out benefits. There's a local board, and we're going to talk about this later. Each local board is five members. There are three that should be employer-appointed, two that are elected system members, and they determine eligibility and payment of benefits, especially disability determinations. Under tier one and tier two, each employer had its own funded status and its own contribution rate. And so it kind of looks like that. The nice, easy-to-understand blue cylinder to the right, that's the pension plan that all people not called police officers or firefighters are part of. So myself, when I was an employee in a municipality, state, it's all put together nice and neatly. Common administration. That's not the case with PSPRS. The aggregate funded rate for the entire plan is only forty-five-point-three percent. So the magical name is unfunded liability. You hear that a lot when you're talking about pensions. What's the unfunded liability? Another name for it, it's called debt. It sounds more real to people when you're talking about debt, I think, than unfunded liability, but that's exactly what it is. Unfunded liabilities are dollars that have been earned by police officers and firefighters and cannot be diminished or impaired. That underscore of diminished or impaired comes right out of court cases where the judges in this state have said that. And so that has had an understandable effect on the ability of the legislature to reform the system. The amount and timing of the contributions that an employer makes directly impacts the funded status of Kingman's plan. So think about it like a credit card. If you make the minimum payment on your credit card, you can make that minimum payment for pretty much your working life. If you pay twice the minimum payment, you will not need that much of your working life to get that credit card paid off. This is a chart that depresses many. This is the funded status of the Arizona Public Safety Retirement Fund. And you can tell things were going swell until the century changed. And since 2000, we've been in steady decline. But again, remember, that's for the whole system. And it's an interesting number, but not particularly relevant to individual accounts. The only thing that's kind of interesting is how your particular entity matches with those numbers. There's been a significant public debate regarding what is an acceptable funded status for pension plans. You hear a lot of conversation around the eighty-percent number. Some argue a hundred percent is the only acceptable funded status. Others say that you could go down as far as seventy. Point is, there's no agreement on what a healthy funded status is. And even if there were, there are other factors you need to consider besides that. And so let's kind of take a look at those factors. These are the PSPRS rates for Kingman since the year 2000. And it looks pretty interesting. The people that are interested in rates goes from about eleven percent in 2000 to over forty in 2017. By the way, the 2019 numbers are numbers we know. Those are going to be incorporated into your budget. So you go to police, and police looks very similar to fire. And you still, I think, kind of go, okay, that's the rate. This is the translation. So in the early part of this decade, like 2010, fiscal 2010, the combined police and fire pension cost budget for Kingman, Arizona was a million-one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. In this fiscal year that we're in right now, it's three million-one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. To give you an idea of that, Tina Moline's estimate for a half a percent sales tax in next fiscal year is three million-one-hundred thousand. So this is actually more money committed to public safety pensions than this council acted on last summer to increase our commitment to local streets. Half a percent for local streets, three-point-one million, three-point-one-eight for the pensions. This drives it home to me even better. This is the percentage of your operating budget that goes to police and fire pensions. So people understand that budgets move over time. But this is taking that into account and still figuring out the percentage. In 2010, it was five-point-two percent of the budget. In this budget, it's eleven-point-two. So hopefully, between those four charts, it gives you a better understanding of the impact that our public safety pensions have had on the Kingman budget. There are two components to the contribution rate. One is the normal cost. That's just the amount of money that current employees have earned, if you will, in the current year. And the two things you need to remember about those is that they're estimated based on actuarial assumptions, but they're the board's actuarial assumptions, so they're probably not yours. And the second thing is that there's an unfunded liability part. Remember, we talked about that as debt. That's a cumulative effect of previous normal costs that we didn't get enough money in the system to pay for. So it just kind of goes over. This particular slide is from the town of Paradise Valley, and I left it here intentionally for two reasons. One is to show you that their employer contribution rate for police in fiscal sixteen was seventy-two percent. We're in the forties. They got there because eighty percent, eighty-three specifically, goes to address unfunded liabilities. So that's the point I'm trying to make with this slide. We could go through and do that calculation for Kingman, and your percentage that goes to unfunded liabilities will be less than this slide. But it, this slide dramatically makes the point that if you can't keep up with the unfunded liability growth, you'll look like this slide at some point in the future. Three types of retirement. Normal, duty-related disability, non-duty related disability. Normal retirement, twenty years of service or age sixty-two with fifteen, high three years of compensation. Eighty percent of average monthly compensation. Anybody who's ever been around a local government or a state government, this formula looks pretty familiar. Duty-related disability is fifty percent of their average monthly compensation or their normal pension, whichever is greater. And a non-duty related, excuse me, disability is a percentage of the normal pension based on years of service. What matters about those three types of pensions is that they all count against the rate calculation, whether there's a revenue stream there or not. So with the rates being what they are across the state, it's a fair question to ask how we got there. And I would identify these five things for you. The first is the plan design itself. We just talked about the fact that everybody has their own account. Some of these are very small organizations, and that was frankly the case of the slide I showed you that was seventy-two percent. I said this before, they probably shouldn't have their own pension account. It's not big enough to do that. So the plan design itself, a thing we're going to talk about in a minute called the PBI or Permanent Benefit Increase. Two major losses in the investment pool, one from the dot-com and one from the Great Recession. A program called DROP, which was designed to incentivize people to stay working instead of retire. And then lastly, actuarial assumptions based on the rate of return, the amount of pay increases, and demographics. So we talked about the plan design. The rates for pooled systems like ASRS are almost always lower than individual rates. Permanent benefit increase. There's a lesson to be learned here about how you deal with the cost of living changes. Rather than grant police and fire officers a cost of living, the legislature decided to give them a permanent benefit increase, which was an amount of money added to their pension based on how well the investments came back for the state board. So in 1986, retirees weren't getting an increase in their monthly retirement benefits. Legislature was asked to deal with that and address the disparity between pensions in the rural areas and the urban areas of the state. And the reason is that people in rural areas typically didn't make the same salaries as people who were in the same profession in urban areas, and so that's how the disparity happened. And so as I just said, they decided that they'd give PBIs instead of COLAs. And the way that worked is that if the investments made more than nine percent, the employees got half of it as a permanent increase. The corollary to that was if you reached a certain level and couldn't get all the money that year, the difference rolled over. And so you wound up taking the top off of the investments, right? So everybody knows that you're supposed to stay with it in the stock market because there are going to be great years to offset the bad years. Well, the PBI plan clipped the top at nine percent. So you can never have a good year to offset the bad year. You had a nine-percent year against a bad year. And that's what it looks like graphically. See that part coming off, and then it goes into the next year. And then you got more, and it comes. See how that works? So then you say, well, what's that mean? Well, see those arrows on the years? That shows you what it means because the rates were negative, but there were still PBIs being awarded from previous rollovers, right? And so for twenty-five years, we had a PBI in this state. And so for twenty-five years, we had a PBI in this state. This explains the disproportion, disproportionality. You're assuming that an urban retiree pension is making fifty-six hundred, a rural retiree's making three thousand. You take the same amount of permanent benefit increase and you apply it, it's a higher percentage for the rural folks. That's giving you an idea about how that happened. So then, the legislature and interested parties decided that they would add DROP to the system. The purpose of Drop is to allow a municipality to better plan for retirements by allowing employees to stay on the job longer. It's available to anybody with twenty years or more of service, and if they enter Drop, they can't stay more than five years, and once they make a commitment to that, they're in, they can't change their mind. It allows the city or the town not to make the employer contribution. So it, on the face of it, it sounds like a good deal budgetarily, right? You don't have to pay forty-some percent, except those are going to be benefits paid out, which means that in the out years, it becomes unfunded liability for you. So that's Drop. Actuarial valuations. The PRS, PSPRS fund in two thousand seventeen returned eleven point eight-five, but the aggregate and individual funded statuses went down. It's like, how does that happen? The first is, all the asset losses and gains for that matter are smoothed over seven years. So it's an, it's like a rolling average. So you're not going to see one year. When you do that applied to the last seven years, the rolling average is six point six, and their actuarial assumption is seven point four. So you're not getting the yield on average that you thought you would. There was a Supreme Court case called the Hall case a couple of years ago that basically challenged whether or not the legislature could reform the system. And one of the consequences of that is that the employee share was reduced from eleven point six-five to seven point six-five. And they modified the tier-two structure as well. So the net effect of that is you have fewer dollars going into the system, the dollars being contributed by employees. The next thing they did is they reduced the assumed rate of return from seven and a half to seven point four percent. And people generally go, well, that's a good thing because that aligns more with reality. The, the challenge to that is every time you reduce the assumed rate of return, it takes longer to accumulate the amount of money. So if you wanted to get five percent on your money, and you had a thousand dollars, that would tell you how much you have at the end of five years. If you had that same thousand dollars and you got two percent, you'd have a smaller amount, same thing. So the, the more conservative, if you will, the assumptions are on rate of return, the bigger the, the unfunded liability. The actuarial assumptions also include a rate, assumed rate of growth in salaries that has now been reduced to three point five percent, but it has the same dynamic. If you have, if you're assuming a five percent rate of growth in salaries, there's going to be more money coming into the system than if you assume it's a three and a half percent rate of growth. And then, something that everybody who's in a defined benefit plan or maybe a life insurance plan is having to deal with is mortality tables have had to be updated because people live longer, by a lot. And then they updated their retirement withdrawal and disability assumptions. The key one being, how long does somebody want to work? And so not many of the actuarial assumptions wore out. State legislature tried to make some corrections to the system in the two thousand seventeen session. There's now a risk pool for employers with two hundred and fifty or fewer police or fire employees. And House Bill two-four-eighty-five allows PSPRS employers permission to switch from a twenty-year to a thirty-year amortization schedule. Remember, we talked about unfunded debt is, or unfunded liability is debt. So just say instead of having a twenty-year mortgage, you got a thirty-year mortgage. Not something I'm going to suggest the city of Kingman do, but it's allowable under this They also took steps to limit the financial exposure when an employer hires somebody who's already in the system. I'm not sure how well that's going to work, but they at least made an effort on that. So let's talk about Kingman. First is, when you have Drop employees, I would strongly suggest you continue to budget the employer share for them. At some point, they're going to be replaced with new hires, and you'll have to pay it anyway, so you don't have the experience of having a budget drop and then come back. But the other thing it does more significantly is it puts the cash into the system. Second, related to that, prepay your budgeted contributions July first. So this year's budget's three point one eight million dollars. Next year's budget's going to be more than that. So that, whatever that number is, July first, Tina should send that money off to the state. Third, review local board practices. And we'll talk about that, but the, the highlights of that are, make sure that all the board members are appointed consistent with the statutes and that they get training. Fourth, conduct a comprehensive study. And lastly, create a pension funding policy. I just explained why it's important to continue paying the contributions for people in Drop. One of the advantages of writing that check, even though it's a really big check, the first of July, is the pension system will get a better rate of return than we will. Because that's what they do, I mean, in massive amounts of money. They have access to investment vehicles that the city doesn't. So that's number one. Number two, obviously, it reduces your unfunded liability. We talked about local boards. The mayor is the chair of the local pension board. Staff or citizens, there are two of, and the employee appointments, there are two of, the employee appointments are voted on by their respective departments. Next, have independent outside legal counsel for the board, and require board policies and procedures that talk about pre-existing conditions of disability retirements and how workers' comp fits into that. Conduct annual work sessions between the PSPRS boards and elected officials, something that a lot of folks don't do. I strongly encourage you to do. Require annual training for board members. I think we've got a, a board training scheduled for next month. It's probably the first board training in five years, at least, for PSPRS board. The current board secretary's been the secretary of that board for four years, and she can't remember one. So need to do that. Make sure you get the staffing right. Involve your, your city manager and finance and HR departments, and as I said several times, ensure the board appointments comply with the statutory requirements. Next, know your numbers. How many people do you have in the system? How many of them are retired? How many of them are active? How long have they been here? You know, all those kinds of detailed, boring things that no city council should want to know, but the organization should. That helps when you're looking at your actual liability and your estimated liability for the pension plan. Do a comprehensive study. It's a lot easier now because the, the state pension board actually generates an actuarial analysis on an annual basis. Tina has those for two thousand seventeen. And it helps you establish a baseline, shows where Kingman is in the pension life cycle. In other words, is the group young today, and it's going to get older, and that's where you're going to see it? Or is it pretty old today, and you're going to have a lot of retirees in a year or two? So just know how that works. There's some more of the specifics that we just talked about. Know the impact of the lateral hires you've made over, over the years. We've tried not to hire a lot of laterals in Kingman. And then lastly, a pension funding document or policy is similar to what you guys do already on contingency or reserves, I'm sorry, I said contingency. Where you, you say that you want those reserves to be at no more than fifty percent, but not less than twenty percent. Same kind of an idea for pension policy. What are you trying to do? It's going to be difficult for Kingman to raise significant money, to contribute additional dollars to the pension fund, because the order of magnitude is pretty large. Remember the slide I showed you with the seventy-two percent? They've contributed over five million dollars out of their reserves to reduce that number, and it's, it's gone from the early seventies from this slide to, I think it's sixty-eight this year. So it, it takes a lot of cash to, to change that arc. Here are some things that a policy document on pension funding would look like. You know, do you want the funding goal to be at a certain percentage? If so, what? Do you want to set a contribution maximum of your operating budget? It's eleven point two right now. You know, is that a number you, you know, that you're content to see go to twelve, thirteen, fourteen? Or are you interested in taking steps to try to keep it in single digits? That's the kind of conversation. Define your own actuarial terms and identify who's responsible for what. And I just turned off the question slide. So that's a, a quick tour through the public safety pension retirement system. It's, it's something that affects every municipality in the state of Arizona. The only question is how significantly affected are you? And if you go back fifteen years, a lot of these employer rates were single digits and some of them below five percent. And nobody today that I can think of is in single digits. So it's big numbers, long story short.
You know, I, I'm very much aware that there are a lot of cities and municipalities in this same boat. Doesn't mean we're not, we don't need to address it.
Correct.
And my question to you is, will you be coming to the council with specific recommendations for this upcoming budget cycle?
The, the recommendations you saw in the slide about continuing to fund the PSPRS rates for Drop employees. And the second one, which is to me the most significant thing Kingman can do, which is to write your annual budget amount to the fund the first of July.
This hasn't been addressed in, I mean, it hasn't been funded, not yet.
Funded, and Tina, Tina's behind me and might have additional comments. My understanding is that it's funded the way you do most payroll things, which is you, you figure out your costs for the payroll period, and then you send off a check for that period, and then the next period comes. And when you look at your variances between budget and actual, you'll see one for pension. What I'm suggesting is you should never see one.
Okay.
Right? It should, if, if it's, if it's three million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars is the budgeted amount, which it is, then the check should be three million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And if, if, as a result of not being able to hire everybody during the year, that actual number would have been three million sixty-two thousand, well, you just wrote a check to the pension fund to reduce your unfunded liability by the difference. So that's, that's to me the most significant thing, is, is writing the check the first of the year. I, I can tell you, my recommended budget will not address writing supplemental checks
Okay.
to, to the fund. I think that's a, a conversation that you and the permanent city manager should have with a focus towards the next year and the year after that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lincoln Felder had a question or comment?
Thank you, Mayor Gates. Let's talk about the local board, if we could. That seems also to me to be very important, long-term, in making sure that we have the right people on that local board. Just a, a quick question. In your prior experience in other communities or what you've seen across the state, have you seen an instance where one of those individuals is either some sort of a contracted financial type of a, actuarial type of a person that has the, the knowledge, the experience? I know just as an, a local example, the county, for instance, I believe the treasurer's office, they have a, a financial advisor they go out with, and they, they serve as, I guess, like a technical advisory member.
Right.
You, you get where I'm going?
I think. Let me try. Okay. And if I completely misunderstood your question, tell me.
Okay.
What, what I think I heard as a question is about the composition of the board and the, the professional staff to support it, okay? The composition of the board is really first and foremost about the fact that this board by statute is designed to be a majority of employer representatives. It's the mayor and two other people, not part of the system, but individuals who are associated with the employer. Two of the members are by statute clearly intended to be from the agency. So there are two police officer, in the police board, two police officers who are elected by the police department. That's, that's the composition. The, the support staff for the board is really what I think your question was about, and we're going to take some steps to have finance staff support the PSPRS board locally. And, and so to me, it'll look a lot like the experience you described from the county. You have the ability to, as a city council, to appoint staff people to one of those three employer positions. I, I'm not sure I'd suggest you do that, even though you have the authority to do that. I think it, the board locally probably functions best if you, if you keep it, if you will, citizen-dominated. Not that the staff isn't citizens, but that, I just, it's different when you do that. But definitely having the, the presence of a finance professional in the room. The other part is the ability for the local board to have access to their own attorney and their own medical person. Those, 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 that's the trifecta of staff for me.
Yeah. And it, that is kind of what I was going for, just when you look at the composition of that local board, just making sure that those individuals have the expertise in the room to, to put forward the best recommendations on, I mean, there's, for this, like the studies that you recommend.
Right. I like what you said it.
You know, I'm saying.
It's that they have the expertise in the room, right? I mean, I think that's exactly right.
Right.
And, and between needing to pay more attention to training the local board and having resources available to the board, with the appropriate professional backgrounds, you know, we could, we could significantly strengthen our local boards in, in Kingman.
Thank you.
Other questions from?
Mr. Bacon, looking ahead.
Yes.
Do you believe that the legislative revisions that have been made will temper this exponential rise in rates? Do we, do we have a, some type of leveling off coming in your opinion? This is an opinion question, obviously.
Not as much as they think. And, and the reason for that is that the, the debt, the unfunded liability trails with everything. So the, the tier-three, for example, fifty-fifty, sounds like a great deal. Effective rate on tier-three is like thirty-eight percent. And it's, and it's because you, you not only take the, the good rate, but you trail about thirty-two, thirty-three points of it. The, the state of Arizona, like a lot of other states, has gotten itself into a place where there's a significant amount of there's a significant amount of unfunded liability. And as I said in my presentation, it's, if you will, guaranteed money. You know, I mean, the, the, the most interesting initiative that didn't pass legislative muster was to allow cities to borrow to pay off that debt. So you're replacing pension-funded debt with municipal debt, presumably at a lower rate. And the legislature didn't like that idea at all, and so they said, no, thank you. But I don't know, I think you'll, we're in the 40s with these rates right now. We can find a way over the next few years to stay in the 40s. That would be a good thing. Your finance director, I'll just close with this, your finance director in her five-year forecast predicts that 3.18 number goes to 4 million.
4 million? Okay.
So, and, and I think she's probably light. But that's, time will tell on that. But your own finance director thinks that number's going up by a fourth.
A larger percent of our operating budget.
Which will be a higher, it'll be equal to or a higher percentage of the operating budget.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much. It's eye-opening.
Thank you. And that completes Sydney's report on the workshop, right? Our next item is the workshop. Thank you very much.
Well, how, how long? Well, it's 7:01, so what do you think? Oh, I know we wanna hear it. I just wanted to see how, how long it was.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will keep this as brief as I can. This is just a recap from the work session that we had with the commissions on February 24th. All of our current commissions were invited to attend, with the exception of the Youth Advisory Commission, because they don't have a quorum right now. And the Municipal Utilities Commission wasn't invited to attend, but no one was in attendance. We had three workshop components, a pre-survey that helped lay out all of the goals that not only the council expected, but what the commissions expected, the workshop itself, and then we are conducting post-meeting follow-up that just concluded today. With the pre-surveys, each member of the commissions was asked to fill out a survey detailing where they felt their commission was as far as meeting their overall responsibilities, things they were maybe spending a little too much time on, things they weren't spending enough time on, and what they felt they should focus on for 2018. And council was asked to complete their surveys outlining what they felt each individual commission should meet for 2018. And these results were provided to everyone at the workshop. With the workshop, a brief training was provided as far as the roles of the commissions, commission chairs and vice chairs, council liaisons as well as staff liaisons. Each commission then broke out with their council liaisons and staff liaisons and were able to sit down and work through those survey results and see where there was some commonality, where council's expectations were different from what theirs were and how they could align those. And each commission provided a verbal report back to the council. I won't go into detail on these because you have them in front of you, but these were the highlights from each of those commissions' reports, from Clean City Commission and Historic Preservation, Parks, Aquatic Recreation and Gulf, and Planning and Zoning, and the Transit Advisory Commission. We are still conducting the post-meeting follow-up. It just closed this afternoon, so we haven't quite detailed out all those individual responses. But overwhelmingly, we've gotten a very positive response for this year. And it's really helping us see where we can improve this next year, where the commissions feel they could use a little more training, where they felt everybody in the room could use a little more training, and then discussions they would like to have both with the council and with their other commissions to make sure that they're progressing and moving their goals forward. Again, our feedback has been very overwhelmingly positive. We've had several comments that the commissions enjoyed being together in one room so they could see things that they had in common, where there were differences and maybe where they're duplicating efforts. We also received some comments that they would like to explore, perhaps a different day of the week. This meeting was conducted on a Saturday. And they suggested maybe looking at a different day of the week, maybe a weekday evening, just because it was so hard for some to make on Saturday. And again, trainings and other things that they would like to see at next year's meeting. And everyone overwhelmingly said that they felt that this should become an annual event. And with that, I will take any questions or comments.
Thank you very much. It was very, very productive. First, I wanna start by saying thank you very much, Councilmembers Staley, for bringing this to the city. Questions, comments? Councilmember Lincoln Felder?
Yeah. Sydney, you had mentioned, and I think it's important for everybody to hear it, that is Kingman really the only city that you know of that's brought their commissions together with their council or not?
So when this first came from the council and we received this directive, I sent out an email to all of my fellow clerks in the state and said, okay, how do we do this? Has anybody else done this? I got back a lot of responses. Well, our councils met with like our Planning and Zoning Commission, but that's kinda it. Nobody else in the state that I am aware of has brought all of their commissions together with their council in one room at one time.
Super positive, and it was a great event, so.
Other questions or comments?
I, I just wanted to thank you, Sydney and Annie, for all your hard work that you put into this. I was very pleased and I can't wait to make this an annual event. So just thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we do see where there's room for improvement next year, but creating a brand-new wheel, something that hasn't been done throughout the state before. It was new for us, it was new for everybody. So we really see where it can grow each year.
Great job.
Vice Mayor Miles?
So productive to be there and to set these goals. The only comment I heard that I didn't see in here was the timing of the event. Might be good to have it before we start even the budget process because some of these things need to be factored in to that process at the very onset. But it was a great, great experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is something we're still staffing out. Unfortunately, we kinda face some challenges with the timing of when the commissions' terms end. When they take their seats, we kinda don't wanna throw that at a brand-new commissioner who hasn't had a meeting yet versus going into the budget and working through that process. So we've discussed other benefits to maybe having this during the summer when, you know, we're through budget season. So we're still staffing that out and trying to see what's gonna work best for the timing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. That concludes the work session. We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the common council to order at 7:08. We've already had roll call. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Jerry Dunn of Oak Street Baptist Church. Kindly stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, as we come before your throne of grace today, we wanna thank you for all that you have given to us. We recognize your bounty and your blessings in so many different ways. And Father, we ask that you continue to bless our city. And Father, we pray that we might live in peace and prosperity and in safety. And Father, we pray that you would be with our mayor, with our members of the city council, that you would lead and guide them in all of the decisions that they make, that, Father, they may be for the benefit of our community. We ask your blessing upon our police officers and for the firefighters. And, Father, we ask for their safety. And, Father, we pray that you would keep the entire city safe because of their diligence and because of their servitude. Father, we ask your blessing upon us now and, Father, just lead and guide us by your Spirit. For it's in Christ's name we ask it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431-03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, minutes of February 20th, 2018. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two, appointments, appointment to the Youth Advisory Commission. Discussion and consideration of appointing Rachel Masters to a one-year term on the Youth Advisory Commission. There are currently four vacancies and no additional applicants. I, I see Ms. Masters in, in the audience this evening. Would you care to come up and approach, discuss with the council why you're interested in serving on the commission? Now, she's walking up, I must say, I met her when she filled out the application at City Hall. We had a very nice conversation. I'm so glad to see you here this evening.
Hi.
Hi. So why don't you tell us about yourself, where you go to school, and why you're interested in serving on the Youth Advisory Commission?
I'm Rachel Masters and I go to Kingman High School. And I'm interested in serving on the Youth Advisory Commission because I don't really do anything outside of school. And it'd be kinda cool to see what the city, like to get to know us, to see what more is going on in the city.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to come down to the city and volunteering your time and your efforts. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion? Hello?
Move to appoint Ms. Masters to the Youth Advisory Commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanna say thank you for, for volunteering and stepping up to serve your city. It's great.
Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. City Clerk's office will be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening. Call to the public, comments from the public. I don't have anyone sign up. Go ahead and read it. Those wishing, wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. I don't have anyone signed up, but is there anyone that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item four, all matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I do have a request to remove item D, parking lot lease. Any other items anyone on council wishes to have discussed separately? Seeing none, I will, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item D.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, we just wanna pull that.
Yeah, the request is to withdraw item D.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. Old business we have done this evening. So moving on to item six, new business, public hearing and consideration of resolution number 5132, authorizing a conditional use permit for mini storages on property located on the northwest side of East Andy Devine Avenue, southwest of Horizon Boulevard. Linda Lowe and Edward Dunham, applicants, and Leonard B. Craig, successor trustee, property owner, have requested a conditional use permit for mini storages to be located on the northwest side of East Andy Devine Avenue, southwest of Horizon Boulevard. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on this request on February 13th. Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the CUP request with the conditions as stated in resolution number 5132. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 5132. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Basically, I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this item. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, if you have any specific questions or slides you'd like to, to see, and the applicants are also here representing tonight.
I guess my first question is, was there any comment from the public on this?
I don't recall any public comments.
Thank you. This, this is a fit in this area, correct?
Yeah, we, we believe that this location is a good fit for this particular proposal. It's surrounded by commercial zoning. It's all C3 in the area.
Okay. Let me ask, is the council interested in viewing the PowerPoint presentation at this time? I'm sorry, you prepared it.
It's okay. No problem.
Right, right, okay. Seeing none, is there any further discussion on this item?
This is a public hearing.
Right. And that's what I was gonna ask. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the, the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 5132.
Move to approve resolution 5132. So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, department reports. City manager, is this an opportunity to talk about the ribbon cutting, or can we do that in announcements?
That's eight.
Okay, so is there anything for item seven? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight, announcements by mayor, council members, city manager. I have two things briefly. I had the privilege and pleasure today of welcoming the 2,000,000th visitor to the powerhouse center. It was really, it was a great experience. It's really incredible considering that approximately 20 people sign the guestbook. That we're up to 2 million is pretty fascinating. So it was a very pleasant event. The couple from Ann Arbor, Michigan were really pleased. They, they have some lovely little takeaways from Kingman to take back home. Additionally, tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, we'll have the ribbon cutting at Centennial Park for the lighting on our new soccer fields. Look forward to seeing all of you there. I think this is a great event for our community, and I think we'll have a lot of, lot of people there. Looking forward to it. Other announcements by council members? We'll start this way, move down.
Just a couple of things. I had the privilege of spending the day at Fire Station Number Two, thank you very much, a couple of weeks ago. And, and I found that everyone I'd met was so professional and dedicated to what they do. It was, it was very good to be there, very good. I attended the Planning and Zoning Annual Report where Dustin Lewis received a plaque for his years of service to the city, which was nice. And I have a request, I don't know if this is the right time, a request for an agenda item four weeks from today, to review the PARG Commission applications.
Mayor, members of council, the schedule for future work session topics has a, I think it's April 17th, has a discussion of changing the process, but it is clear that at least in the instance that Councilmember Crest mentioned, where they can't make meetings because they don't have quorums, because they don't have enough members, that the process of having the council do the appointments should take place. So I'm more than happy to schedule that for the 3rd of April. And we have applications, so that you'll, this is basically the council interviewing people.
And on that note, will we also be having some discussion coming up in the near future about the frequency of meetings? I mean, PARG really covers a lot of different activities.
I know of at least two commissions that are interested in meeting more frequently. And I will check with the city clerk and the city attorney to make sure that there's not some city code reason to, you know, that gets in play there. Because I, I actually think that in the two instances, that the commissions could meet monthly if they chose to, that they're, they're not barred by code from doing that. That's a decision that they have made to meet quarterly, and they can change that to meet monthly, so.
Thank you.
I'll be communicating that directly to the, to I'll be communicating that directly to the two commissions.
Thank you very much. Going down, Councilmember Lincolnfelter, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Vice Mayor Miles?
I'll just report that last week I did present at the Arizona Association for Economic Development on the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project, and it was so well-received as everyone's there was very interested in how Kingman is pursuing its economic development strategies and implementing its general plan. And there was just a lot of enthusiasm, and I think that the, the feeling I came away with was that people are very interested in what's happening in the northwest corner of Arizona, and glad to hear about it. And certainly, there are people that are, stand ready to learn more about it and be advocates for it. So it was a very good experience. Thank you very much. Councilmember Yocum?
Nothing this evening.
I have nothing.
I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, and they are working on some really exciting things. And two items that I wanted to mention tonight that they are working to bring forward to the council, one is a landmark program, and the other one is a facade program to help fix up the fronts of our buildings. But they have, they have voted on some really aggressive goals for 2018, and I think we're gonna see a lot more out of them, and I'm really excited. The other, I wanted to ask to add probably to that commission item is for us to consider making an exception to the rules to allow a few people to serve on more than one commission because we are having a hard time filling all the spots, and maybe we could allow two to three citizens to fill more than one spot for a while. So can we add that to that?
I can, I can add that to the seventeenth of April agenda when we talk about the process.
Madam Mayor, I forgot, if I may, this last Friday, downtown Kingman, there was an event called First Friday, and I just meant to mention that. I attended that, it was on Beale Street, they had closed down a block off, and just to all the vendors down there, to all of the small business owners down there, it was an amazing event. And they're gonna have one, I think, every, every month, and so I, I look forward to going to the one in April, hopefully I'll see all of you there. You know, they had all sorts of, of different stuff going on. It was really incredible, really incredible. Great job.
All right. And that, that, we're gonna continue that for at least the next five months, correct?
Thank you, exactly. The, the special event permit for, for that First Friday has been issued for the next five months, so through August is how long those will last at least. And then I misspoke, it's the seventeenth of April, work session, not the third.
Could I mention, there, there were several people that commented on the fact that the city had collaborated with the, the employers and, and closed off that section of the street, and, and the comments were that it seems like a small thing, but it's a really big thing, and they appreciated it, so, well done.
If I could, and I wanna request another item, and that would be for the council to consider how much expense we wanna take on to help support items like this, where in this case, we used, I believe, fire trucks to help block off the streets to cut back on the cost, which would normally be around a thousand dollars to block off a street. So I'd like to have that discussion with council on nonprofit organizations putting together, community events, and what we could do to subsidize some of the, the big costs that are involved with blockades and things like that.
And add that, it'll be post-budget release, but we can definitely put that on.
Thank you. So I think we segued into item nine, which is the council request, request for future work session, agenda items.
Did.
And/or calendar adjustments. Is there anything else anyone on council wishes to add to that? Seeing none, we do have need for an executive session this evening. Go ahead and read these. Land sale lease pursuant to ARS thirty-eight four thirty-one oh three A seven. City attorney requests that the council go into executive session to discuss legal matters invol- involving the sale or lease of real properties owned by the city of King, Kingman. Item one, discuss and provide direction to sell leased real property owned by the city of Kingman. Number two, discuss, provide direction, and/or approve lease agreement with Fleishman Arizona Investment Corporation for the lease of the city's parking lot on Third and Andy Devine Avenue. Before I entertain a motion, we will, there, there is opportunity for action on, on these items this evening. This is for benefit of, of the audience, whether they wanted to wait or not.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to move to executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll return to open session at seven forty-four. Having taken no action, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for attending.